All right, call this meeting order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. An executive session was held on May 17th and May 22nd to discuss personnel and real property. Roll call, please. Here.
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 There are two additional items to the agenda to accept the resignation of the city clerk and to also vote on advertising for the position. Do I have a second to add those to the agenda? Seven.
Rojas.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes. Is there any public comment at this time on agenda items? Any public comment on agenda items? Sweep.
Hey, everyone. Just quick. I'd like you to accept a $500 donation from the Holmes Ford Fire Company and $100 donation from somebody who's coming to the sweep committee.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept those two donations for the sweep committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rechner.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and just for your awareness, this Sunday is our next sweep stewardship program occurring at the property starting at nine in the morning now after the rest of the summer. And then we received the final donation payment from Yisum this week as well. Any questions?
All right, thanks. Awesome, thank you, Kurt. All right, proclamation for Sunbury Pride for June 17th. Recognizing June as LGP DQIA plus Pride Month in the Sun Pride event in Snyder Union or Thunderland Counties in the city of Sunbury, Pennsylvania honored in the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan. The Stonewall uprising was a tipping point in the gay movement in the United States, whereas the city of Sunbury has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community is committed to supporting and the equal of all people in the community. And whereas many residents, students, town employees, business owners within the borough of Lewisburg who contribute and also in Sunbury and all the other counties to this movement. Whereas various advancements have been made to respect equality and treatment of lesbian, gay men, bisexual, transgender, and questioning persons throughout the nation, but there continues to be some opposition against people in this community and around the world. It is important that cities like Sunbury to stand up and support our residents who are affected. Whereas several cities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as National LGP DQ+ Pride Month, whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender people, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. Whereas events like the Sun Pride organized by the Association of Inclusion, Respect, and Equality further symbolizes the city's celebration of the diverse and support the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer movement. Now there, I, Josh A. Rojas, by virtue of authority vested me as the mayor of the city of Sunbury, do hereby proclaim June 17th as Pride Fest in the city of Sunbury and invite everyone to reflect on ways in which we can live together with the commitment of mutual respect in our community. Thank you. And then I also have another proclamation for National Safety Voting Week. During National Safety Voting Week, the United States Coast Guard, its federal, state, and local voting partners encourage all voters to explore and enjoy America's beauty and water respectfully. Safe voting in preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most voting actions, that life jackets can prevent nearly 83% of vote fatalities. National Voting Week is observed to bring attention to some important lifesaving tips for recreational voters so they can be safe, have a more fun experience throughout the year and the water. So therefore, I, Josh A. Rojas, do hereby proclaim that Safe Voting Campaign from May 26th as Vote Safety Week in the year-round effort. All right, we have new business. To accept the resignation of Michael Sender from the Civil Service Board. Do I have a second?
Easter.
Yes.
Rojas.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Accept the resignation of DPW employee Scott Nagle as of May 12th. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Seven.
Rojas.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Easter.
Councilman Rechner.
Okay, we have expenditures of $148,017.17 of general funding and $8,012.45 of local fuel.
I make the motion to pay those bills.
Rechner.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes. To accept the resignation of City Clerk Jolynn Barner effective of July 17th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes.
Rojas.
Yes.
Yes.
And as I said, it's July 17th. Jolynn agreed to stay on until then to help with the transition phase to make sure the new person can, you know, get out, you know, have a little overlap to make sure everything gets followed through. And also, this is more of a statement, but just to advertise the position for the city clerk.
July 17th is really fair to us.
Yes, yes. Discussion, TSA set-aside grant, Mr. Backer.
So the TA set-aside grant is coming up again. That is what we were awarded to Market Street on last year, a year ago. So it is come up again. It is not, no match is required for this. And I just want to discuss with any other street sweep projects that we're interested in. I know there was, I talked to Councilwoman Martina, and she expressed interest on using these funds to apply to continue the sidewalks or walkway at the riverfront. So I wanted to see if that's, you know, any other ideas that anybody else may have that is similar. I don't know, Steve, if you have any additional input that you would like to see.
Yeah, we saw ours the same, but we'd really love to see it extended up towards Raining Street.
So we're taking money that was set up from Market Street?
No, this is, this is, we were awarded. This is, that was a different grant. I'm just saying that's the grant we were awarded. It's the same grant. So this is a, there's no match required. What you do need to pay for is engineering. And I can, you know, depending on what project we would like to go geared toward, I can get a quote and see how much that would be for engineering for that specific project.
Is that TA, is that federal or state?
It's state. Steven Penn, dot Steven, sorry.
Anyone else on that topic? All right, I'm just going to turn these next two over to Steve.
Okay, we're looking to promote former laborer Mike Peffner, who is currently a part-time. I'd like to throw him up to full-time. He will not require insurance. And it's a lot of minimal hit to budget, which we're already prepared for.
So it is budgeted to have a new full-time?
We're, you know, from running our department, we're three full-time people down from when I first started there. So pick one of them, this is very exciting.
They also replace him on Tishmasani.
That was a part-time worker.
Oh, he was a part-time worker?
He was part-time, yes.
Any questions, anyone on that one? And what, what would be his starting wage?
Same wage he's making now.
Okay.
Just a matter of just moving him up.
The status.
Yeah, moving his status up to full-time.
All right, and then for the two additional part-timers?
Yeah, looking to hire two part-times, which we already have budgeted in. Mainly what this is for is for line painting. We've had a hell of a time with COVID, with supply issues of getting paint. We finally got paint in. We have a new supplier. We're going to bring in a couple of young fellows or college fellows and get them in and start getting some paint done. And, you know, we're going to need to replenish one of these, Scott Nagle, maybe one of them we might keep on. We're already budgeted in for it.
Questions, anyone? Look at me, look at him.
What's that?
I mean, if there's Fiat students out there, I know Ron had a hard time just to find people for the pool because, you know, it's kind of, when our wage isn't competitive to other businesses hiring, it's hard to get Fiat students when they're making four or five dollars less than if they go for, example, Walmart Target. So, but if that is an option, we can look into it. Anyone else on that topic? All right, I'm just going to turn to BPNL.
The BPNL agreed that 69 KV line location is pretty simple. BPNL sent us a letter stating that they're going to be putting in new, stronger metal poles. And in order to do that, they have to do some soil boring tests on Sunbury City property. They promised to restore the property to its former condition if there's any disturbance, and that's basically that.
Yeah, any question, anyone?
Where, where, is this a separate line that's going through? Is this just generally, is it?
They're rebuilding the existing Sunbury 69 KV line.
You know, if it's Punch Street?
It doesn't say.
Okay.
Any questions, anyone? All right, there are a couple announcements. We're now accepting letters for a vacant three-year term on the Board of Appeals in Harv and one full-time vacancy for a three-year term on the Civil Service. Please submit all interested letters to the city clerk's office. City of Sunbury Public Safety Office, they're doing their neighborhood walk-around on June 5th through June 9th. Tire and TV recycling event will be take place on June 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the James R. Easter Community Center. The next council meeting will be held at City Hall on June 12th at 6:15. Is there any public comment at this time? Oh, go ahead, Gene.
Real quick, for doing the fireworks ordinance, I sent a bullet point over to Joel today. I don't know if they passed that in the second meeting yet or not, but the one thing I do, I'm going to put posters on the city's website and the police department's Facebook page, so we have that. The only thing I was asked to be looked at changing is, and I talked to the solicitors today about this, is the, basically, if the Fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they're allowed to shoot fireworks off immediately preceding Friday for Saturday until 1:00 a.m. I'm looking at asking the city to change that 11:00 p.m. I think that's coming late enough to be blowing fireworks off for the Fourth of July. And the weekend, just so everybody also understands, the weekend, Friday, Memorial Day, and Labor Day, it's the same way on Saturday and Sunday. You can lay off fireworks until 1:00 a.m., but let it change that also to 11:00 p.m.
Any questions?
Oh, you didn't change those? What's that?
Are you good with that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, fine, I'm fine with it, yeah.
All right, anyone else? Any other public comment? Please state your name.
Mary Collier, Sunbury Fire Police. We have been asking about our parking lot since May 30th of 2022.
There you go.
We have a sinkhole that we were noticed. And we get, well, hang on, hang on. Jim, you have told me this. It's getting worse, and I don't want us losing our building. John, we need help with this. It's not a, you know, inexpensive ordeal to partake in. I mean, I realize that you guys have your priorities, but when you guys ask the fire police to be there, we're there in any situation along with the raincoats. We got poured on the other week when it was raining so bad. We were wet from head to toe. No raincoats, no rainbands. If you guys don't want to help, just tell us.
Mary, did you show us which ones you wanted here?
Why didn't?
The raincoats, remember we talked about the gear? Do you have the trade magazines where you purchase that stuff?
I gave you that. I gave you, I gave you the cards for the deep left. He wasn't there.
Well, maybe you guys can meet again, get those in the process for order wherever needs to take place. And for the parking lot, I guess, well, like I said, you guys get with Steve and John and get down there and get it looked at and see the best way to get it resolved, so.
We also have gave lists to Jody when she was in, to Derek, on things that we might need or we do need to help. And, you know, they were going to look for money, but we've never heard anything. This has been three or four years.
Quotes, do you have any quotes for the prices for that, for the fix, the sinkhole or the raincoats? Because if we have a price to go with for both of them?
Yeah, they're about, what did you pay for yours?
I paid $20.
For the raincoat, what about the sinkhole? Did you ask anybody with that?
Yes. Three different people, okay, there. We had a guy from Danville, we had, can't think of their names now, Little Sunbury here, Adams, and we had another guy that's, I don't think he's going to be capable of doing it, yes. The highest quote was $30,000.
If you submit that to the administrator, he'll look in the, in.
I've already had conversations with individuals about it, but I did ask the quotes and I didn't get it.
So, Mary, get those quotes over so they can, so they have them, okay?
So the raincoats, they should go to the fire department and regists?
Um, no.
Well, I think you should still.
No. Yeah, well.
All right, so you can look at both options. You can look at the fire department, the next meeting, bring that up. And then if you don't get anywhere there, make sure Jim gets the.
We brought up about our vehicle getting rust fixed on it. And they said, you guys don't have the money. You have money, pay for it. That's what the fire department said. Yes, we have money, but what if the vehicle goes? What if the house, something happens to the siding on a building or the garage, just like the air conditioner or furnace we had to put in this year? We paid for that. If something goes, we have to have the money. Now, we were told to spend our money, so they would give us money. It don't work that way. We have to save money for a new vehicle because it's going to go sooner or later. It's old. And now can I bring the last thing up?
It's up to you, Mary. It's public comment, you, it's your time to shine.
As far as Jolynn, she's the best thing that happened to us. And I think we all need to reconsider her resignation and try to give her what she wants because she's out the city, she's, you know, trying to talk to people, trying to get involved with the city things. Really, we all as fire police appreciate her. So I think we need to dig into that a little deeper and talk to Jolynn about staying. That's our opinion from the fire police.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else?
This time, thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria Burden. So I just want to go back and visit the last meeting. So my first question tonight would be, where are we at with the RC tract? Where is, where is that?
Well, we're talking to some contractors.
That's it?
What would you like to know?
Well, I, this was spoken about back in October of 2021. And now it's May of 2023.
Kurt, do not talk about just the other day.
Right, yep.
And have you been following up with the business owner about that?
You mean the car shop, do you think?
Because I encouraged him.
I know Jason very well.
Because I encouraged him to be here, so he's quite frustrated. So he, I won't quote what he said, but that's why I'm asking. So that way it's in a public forum that this was brought up. And if you could follow up with him because this is 2021, now we're 2023. And my understanding was there was grant funds for that?
Yes, we've seen some grant.
So you have grant funds, will that cover the cost of?
We'll find out with contractors, we're open.
So now I'd like to ask about, to go back to last week when we were discussing the Celotex and there was some confusion. And again, my, my questions were, so now I'm going to ask them a different way. Hopefully I can get clarification. So when Derek, I felt right to know what you got today. So the RAPP grant for Celotex.
Yes.
Was, when was that submitted?
It was submitted, I think it was August 2021, I believe.
Well, the paperwork I have today is dated 3/26/21.
Okay.
The grant application.
I really don't know when it was. It was 2021, it was somewhere around there.
Okay, but on January, December 7th, 2021, there was a newspaper article with all of you, with councilpeople and Senator Boardman and Mr. Paul for standing at Celotex saying about the $2 million grant.
That was, that was the award ceremony.
Okay, so that December.
Award, that December award is from the application that is, you received today.
Okay, so it was awarded to you back in December?
Of that year, yes.
So like what I received today, what was that? Was that the application?
That was the application for those funds that we received, the $2 million, yes.
So you received those funds?
Yes.
You accepted those funds?
Set, council accepted those funds.
So you have those funds in the coffers now?
That's, no, we have, so RAPP is a little bit different than most grants.
I read, yeah, so, yeah, I read on it. So basically, you're not going to get the funds to start the project and all of that.
So it's a two-application, so there's the pre-application, which basically, or, yes, pre-award application, excuse me, which is what you would receive there. So once you, that's basically to release those funds for that project. Then moving forward, there is a post-award application process, which we are in the process of doing because there's certain steps and certain requirements you have to meet. Once that is accepted by a third-party contractor that the state contracts with to administer these, then you receive a contract that you have to sign and everything. So we're not at that stage yet because we have to show, you have to do 21, 22 different tabs of different things, and you have to have those in twigs.
So, so the one point, so I'm going back to the old contract here for a minute because I just want clarification on that. So there was, it was the 1.5 million that you were going to give to Northumberland County. Then the county was going to give American Rescue Funds to the city, 1.5 million, right?
So you mean the original, the original deal?
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Right?
Right, that was the point.
Maybe can I just interject here? Back to RAPP, that's a reimbursement program.
Correct, correct, yes. So then my question is, so there's 1.5 to here, 1.5 back to here. Then there's, there's, there's $500,000 not accounted for. So where is that?
That's not the contract anymore, that's all to take.
Okay, but I was still going back and asking these questions.
So there's different ways that.
So let's go back to that and say, where was that $500,000 going to come from? If we were back there.
So working with the Office of the Budget, for example, the traffic study that we did, that money to count toward, this money that we spent toward that $500,000. The, if we got a grant for the line, if we got a, just like we're looking for Siskiyou Avenue funding because infrastructure, it enhances that site.
Correct.
I tried to make the argument that any infrastructure on that roadway, no matter where we spent it at, should be eligible to use as match. It came down to you had to spend certain eligible funds after a certain street that we don't have funds up to yet to use as match there. So there's quite a few different options. CDVG is an option, you know, there's other options that you could look at as far as grant money we're going to be looking potentially for.
And state grant money, though, right?
It can't, most of the time it can't, but it can be Appalachian Trail Commission, it could be CDVG funds, most they know, some yes, but they're very finite, federal dollars, ARPA funds, all that.
So my only other thing, I want to go back and just, per last meeting because we were talking about having a public meeting and I spoke and said that Mr. Mary Rojas had asked for a public meeting on January 9th, which, and I forgot that there was a public meeting here, you had emailed regarding that. And I responded back to Mr. Backer that that, that public meeting in January 23rd is null and void at this point because now there's a new contract. So that public meeting, so there was a public meeting, I just want to stand corrected, and that meeting has nothing to do with the new contract now. But I also want to also bring up the fact that it was discussed about the minutes from February 20th of 2023. It was discussed that the minutes were not correct based on the RAPP discussion. So my question is, so one, when I reviewed the agenda for February 20th meeting, it just said RAPP Grant, Jim Easter. It doesn't say new, it doesn't say extension.
I can clarify.
Doesn't even say what it was for. So my concern as citizens, when we're looking at these agendas and it just said RAPP Easter, or RAPP Grant Easter, why, why can't we know what, all that information?
So there was a little bit of confusion because I wasn't able to attend that meeting. That was the first meeting, or that was the Monday after my daughter was born, so I wasn't able to be here. So like just, we just talked about, RAPP is a little bit different than a lot of other grants. And there's a two-application step process technically for this, for these funds. So what Councilman Easter was referring to was the second portion of the application, the post-award application he wanted to get going. And that's what he was referring to. So I just assumed it was an extension just based off of, because I didn't do any other applications to put in for additional funds. So that's where I was confused because the only thing we've done for these funds is an extension. So I just assumed it was an extension. But I, like you, I went back and watched the meeting that was on YouTube and put it together because Councilman Easter talked to me afterwards. We need to get moving on this application, the second portion of the application. So what was referred to was the second portion of the funds that were already awarded, that 22-tab process, that's what it was referred to. Just because it's a little bit, I'll admit, the grant is cumbersome and confusing. So I wasn't, I apologize for not being here to be able to give that clarity.
But I'm going to go a step further. You weren't here, that's fine. But when you watched the video, and so it was asked when the RAPP came up, but like I said, there's no description on the agenda. And then it was stated that to get the RAPP started takes six months. Jamie, you see the caller, ask the question for what? For what? It was asked twice. The person that answered for what was actually Mr. Rechner. Mr. Rechner answered the question for Celotex. So what I'm going to take a step further here and ask is, so why wasn't the question answered when Jamie asked twice for what?
Let me answer.
So, so, let me, let me go, and then I'll, let me just finish. So, so my concern here is, is that, so the question was asked twice. It was, Mr. Easter said for, and Jamie says for RAPP. For, and Mr. Rojas asked what it was for, starting the application. And Jamie said it's a new one. No one said it was an extension. Nobody said it was anything other than, Rick, you said Celotex.
Well, I think it wasn't an extension, but that's what.
Okay, so, but here's my question. So when Jamie asked for what, why wasn't Jamie given a correct answer?
Why, that was, I gave you that question because I thought it was that we were still waiting for the government to release those lines that we could initiate stuff, okay? Not that there was.
You were wrong, Rick, it was for Celotex, right?
Right.
Okay, so you were right, that's what I'm saying.
No, what I'm saying, the second thing was, from what I understand, when we were talking about the sweep side, I know, because there was some debate on whether where we were going to give that additional $500,000
Right.
for, for matching funds. And the research that I did, we could use equity in our property, properties, because we weren't going to use the funds for that, but we could use the equity that we had to match the funds they were giving us.
So, and thank you for that research, and I appreciate that. So again, I'm just saying that someone asked the question twice, and instead of it being transparent and it had question and being answered to say that we're doing the application for the second process or whatever. And same thing was on the agenda. If we could be a little more, have a little more clarity on there. You know, just like tonight, TA set-aside grant, Backer. I guarantee that most of us sitting out here not know what a TA set-aside grant is. So if, if TA can be, you know, like, it's just, there's always an alphabet soup on here and people don't understand anyway. Just my suggestion, I've been asking that for two years, so I'm not meaning that divorce. The only other question I have is, okay, so now. The only other question I have is, okay, so now we're at the new, which I followed right to know for that as well, and I got it for the new contract. Um, so just wanna understand this process because I spoke with the commissioners the next day and I'm just confused. So I just would like clarification. So the new contract was written. Was that written with the commissioners or was that contract written?
You keep saying contract. There was never a signed contract.
Okay, so the M, what is it, MOU?
No.
No, I should press.
Proposal, yeah.
Okay, so who wrote the proposal?
There was talk apparently back and forth. I talked to Nate Savage from the county and he said, we want something new. We want this new. So what I did was I researched other places that had done these intergovernmental, governmental municipal partnerships. I took what they did and I changed it for our purpose. So I got that commission idea out of, I think, Lancaster. Um, there were different things that I took from different, you know, whatever. Um, point being, I made it up and I sent it to Nate and said, what do you think of this? And now I'm waiting to hear back from the, uh, retired commissioners. Sorry, every sensation provides it. I knew that was right. That's it.
But at the last meeting, it was presented that, that this was written with the commissioners, at the meeting with commissioners, and then you voted to send this over to the commissioners.
Well, I had a proposal sent, drawn up by Joel, sent to the commissioners, reviewed and discussed amongst them. Never had a contract signed.
Oh, no, I hear that. I'm not saying it's signed. I'm just saying that.
We had no contract. Well, we did a proposal, but honestly, I didn't, I don't know that anybody else did, but I definitely didn't talk to, to the commissioners or anything like that. I just talked to Nate and sent over a proposal to Nate. He was gonna talk to the commissioners and in the meantime, these folks asked it and said, hey, if they like this, we can do it moving forward. But they didn't like it or whatever. Maybe they don't like it. I don't know. Maybe they do like it. But that's what we're waiting to find out exactly what their response was.
I was just getting clarification because there was talk that, my, like, taking from how it was being said is that they sat down and came up with this together or something.
No.
Um, because when I spoke to the commissioners the next day, they said, I don't even know what's in that proposal.
Right.
So if they happen to.
And that was true.
So, but it's still just.
Well, they should have by then actually, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It was the next morning. So, um, yeah, but it, it just brings me back to the, to the fact that what Mr. Mr. Mayor Brochus was asking was to slow down a little bit and let's look, have everyone look over that with counsel, um, and so, uh, because things just get really, you know, shoved through and I understand the process and the properties and stuff, but I completely, let me clarify, I have real issue with redevelopment of that property. That's not what I'm asking. I'm just getting clarification of these things to make sure, um, that there's the understanding and, um, thank you.
Any other public comment? Please state your name, sir.
I have a question. How does Upper Augusta Township get in there? It's going up property between the township. They being shut out altogether or how are they gonna be in law?
I can answer that, if that's okay. I'll, the, a couple of years ago, before I was here, um, Mike Affobaum and Mike Kula had a lawsuit going on with Upper Augusta Township on behalf of the city. The judge drew a line. What's on our side of the line is ours and what's on their side of the line is theirs. My understanding is the vast majority, if not all, of that property that we're talking about was found being in Sunbury. The, it goes on an angle, I, I don't know what it's called, but it goes on an angle such that more is in Sunbury at the top than at the bottom, if that makes sense to you.
Well, mine used to go along the old railroad and bank, huh?
Yeah, it doesn't now. It, judge drew a line.
They have a, a mile across Four Street, Wiper and Bank where it is, in the center of what is like, on, uh, Stateport side.
I know where you mean.
What is it? Are we surveying that or what?
I, Joe, I.
I don't know.
We, we checked all this out when, when Michael was alive and, and on that side of Four Street, the city owns up to the bank. On the Montgomery Ward side of Four Street, it's actually, there's a small sign down in front of the YMCA that says city limits. It's only about like that big. From that sign, it comes up again, don't come up all the way to the bank, but it comes up and follows the curvature of that railroad path. Okay, and we were told at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, because you reported this also, that since most of the properties are in the city limits, like the bank still pays taxes to the city of Sunbury, even though it's partially built in Upper Augusta Township.
Right, uh, the banks totally, the banks totally in Upper Augusta Township. The line goes from that, that plaque that you're talking about, and that ball field, the single ball field, that plaque is what you're saying, and it shoots at an angle, as Joel was saying, up to the south.
Montgomery Ward's.
Yeah, Upper Montgomery Ward's even on Upper Augusta's side. I mean, it's a little.
But they, they tax it to the city of Sunbury.
But I guess, I, I don't mind. With, Kyle, if you see what we're saying, the, I'm gonna do this in the air again, but in front of those, the line, it goes up towards Montgomery Ward and then it keeps going up and that slice of pie gets bigger and sell attached to it somewhere, if that makes sense to you.
Well, that was what they call the scissor in the local.
A what?
This wasn't, this was like.
Where's Montgomery Ward? Just out of curiosity.
Fighters.
Fighters. Technically, technically, this was Montgomery Ward's too. Don't pretend you're not old enough to know.
I've never heard of it. It's like talking about.
It's like, and then crosses.
Okay.
And where it intersected with Mike, where you all filed, uh, face power is.
And I can't tell you exactly where the line is. I can say, well, it looks like on the map, it was, that's what I saw, and I saw that recently, but I've been, I wasn't involved in setting it, so I can't tell you exactly where it is in Upper.
This building had been considered part, partly in Upper and Lower Mount Everest.
Well, no, it already did. That's solved. That's, but it can't be appealed. It's years ago, but we have that in.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, please state your name, sir.
Kurt Crowe. Um, so within the last two weeks, I've had multiple people reach out to me and they're asking the same question. So now, it just, um, came on my phone. Sitting here listening, everybody. Uh, during the pandemic, we leave the container ordinance. So a lot of people now, when Sunbury started, they're asking if the city still has the open container.
Yeah, we kept that permanent, correct?
Okay, but they just didn't wanna get careful about, about.
Yeah, no, they're still good yet. Good question, good question.
All right, and definitely thank you for, um, our explanation for the.
Yeah, real quick, just so, just so everybody knows, we created the Masser Riches Bank, we're buying the Turpland Y. I mean, it's also, it's been Sunday. Been an asset, maybe we should have the same amount walk around this week, uh, which is not, I'm different time.
Please state your name.
Mary Collier. Derek, this question's for you. If you contacted these contractors for our parking lot, I'd like to have a list of them.
No, I asked you for the, I asked you for the quotes, because I talked to Becky Tomage and actually the day that you talked, talked to me about it was.
We did give you two quotes.
I never received them.
Can you make sure he gets them again so he has?
I'll give them to you if you get them.
Okay, I'll make sure he gets them. All right. Any other public comment at this time? Uh, just a few couple of announcements. I'm sorry, the Sandwich Roll Slate is June third. What time and what time?
Eleven to two.
Eleven to two. Also, the Sunbury Pool Opening Day is also that same day, which is June third.
How many?
Twelve or eleven?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Yes.
And then the Sunbury Summer Kickoff is also that same day from twelve to ten thirty. You're chicken, chicken and law.
Uh, I just wanted to announce the Sunbury Rotary Club, our Flags for Heroes will be going in. We're not gonna do that anymore, so.
Okay.
But the flags will be going in Wednesday, so those will be along Front Street there, so they'll be up until after the celebration.
Thank you. Oh, and then tomorrow is the Kiwanis Re-Grand opening at six o'clock?
Yes.
Oh, no, twenty-third, twenty-third tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Time five five, you're having. I think they're five thirty, like half, talking and then the thing starts at six itself.
Correct.
I adjourn this meeting. Get that real quick. That was fast. You gotta be quick on the draw. I hear you.